Oh, the Benny and June. Johnny Depp.
Is it Johnny Depp? Couldn't tell you. Like I said, I've never seen him. And what's in this one?
Let's ask the audience.
Good evening. We will call the board meeting of October 26, 2023 of the Escondido Union School District to order. We believe we have one comment from Amelia Juarez.
Al microfono, por favor. Y lo van a decir en español y luego lo van a tratar de decir, ¿okey?
Buenas noches, señores y señoras. Muchas gracias por su atención. Estoy aquí para pedirles, por favor, que examinen el caso de mi hijo Guillermo Reyes. Yo pienso que él ya aprendió de sus errores, ha tratado de mejorar y, por favor, para que se le permita regresar al distrito escolar. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. I'm here to ask that you please look at my son's look at my son's case. He learned and he's learned to better himself and I'm asking that you let him come back to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Juarez. That concludes our public comment. We will now adjourn to closed session. All right. Good evening. We'll reconvene the board meeting for the Escondido Union School District, meeting of October 26. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, I will go ahead and lead us in that.
Could place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C3, roll call. Let the record reflect, all board members are present and accounted for. We have a report out of closed session. In closed session, the board took action to approve the recommendation for the appointment of Audrey Frank as interim assistant superintendent of Human Resources effective November 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Frank.
So, good evening, Board President Olson, Board of Education, Dr. Ibarra in cabinet. This is a huge honor and I will do my best to make you proud. When I, when Dr. Ibarra came today and talked to my staff, I told them that it was, it isn't about me, it's about the we. And I am super excited to be part of the bigger we now and see what impact I can make on this district and I thank you for the honor.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion passes five to zero. Do we have any public comments? All right, moving on to item E1. Educational services.
Regarding educational services, action upon student reinstatement case number 2022-23-06. Move to approve recommendation for reinstatement of the student to a middle school of the district's choice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Take a roll call vote. Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Houston?
Aye.
And Mark Olson votes aye for a vote of five to zero. Item E2.
Regarding item E2, move to approve the recommendation for student reinstatement on case number 2022-23-21 to a middle school of the district's choice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Houston?
Aye.
And Mark Olson votes aye, five to zero. Thank you. Item E3.
Regarding item E3, move to approve the recommendation for student reinstatement case number 2022-23-12 to a middle school of the district's choice.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Houston?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to tonight's main agenda. Item F1, Framework for the Future Initiative.
All right, good evening. So tonight, we want to go a little bit in depth into our framework for the future. Of course, the board has been fully briefed on what this is, but we also are going to give you an opportunity to review the prototype of the Framework for the Future document that you all have in front of you and we do have some in the audience. So you can look through it and realize that this truly reflects a document of all the hard work that we did last year and will guide our work moving forward. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing our framework for the future and of course, end with a discussion on possibilities of how we might utilize the Mackenzie Scott funds and have a discussion with the board. So of course, as usual, it begins with the vision to actualize the unlimited potential of every learner. And as part of that, we will all be empowered, engaged, encouraged, and committed. And that's what, when we look at the vision, this is the roadmap of how to, the how to get to our vision. When we look at our focus goals, you know, increase student achievement, create a safe environment. The framework provides the how to get to those goals. Is how will, how might we get there so that we're now strategically working towards actual, making that a reality in our district. And so there, you see the prototype. And you'll recall that when we, we created this framework for the future, it was a labor of, that involved a lot of stakeholders. We had equal partners with parents, teachers. We had classified employees and of course, management. All four groups working together to, to ask the question of what do we want for our students? And of course, in the, as the key components for the framework are the, in those circles, you will see the, the, the the profile, the learner profile of what are the outcomes we want for our students. And so we also have a model that we are looking at is how want, how will we get to those, those competencies? And in the model we'll go through, it's, it's about making it personal, personalizing it. Making sure it's authentic experiences. Making sure that, that it is inclusive and equitable. And of course, above all, it's about competency, competency base. So it's not just about having fun, for fun's sake. It's about truly getting to those standards, getting the learning done, but in just a different way to make sure we're reaching our students. And of course, it involves our big moves. And so when we're talking about the empowered learner, empathetic collaborator, ethical scholar, effective communicator, critical thinker, and creative problem solver, those are the, those are the skills that we need to move forward and making sure that our students can behave in this manner. And of course, around that circle, you'll see it's, it's about making sure that our, it's personalized, authentic, equitable, and competency based. And so you'll see that coming through loud and clear in what we're doing. And so of course, at the end of the, at the end of our work with the framework for the future, we said, okay, where, where should we start? We've got this great audacious plan and right now it's just a framework. How might we get there? What are those beginning states? Steps. And so we engaged the committee, the, the design team. And we came up with, we broke it down to the, where is it? The five big moves. I'm going forward. I need to go back. The five big moves. The first one being a school redesign. And so our, our the design there is each school does, will, we're going to pick four to five schools that every year will go through the design, this design process. We're going to put the schools through their own design team. Create a design team at the schools and start and replicate what we did as a whole team for the district. And we've got the framework. And now in support of the framework, what might a school do? And so we've got schools that, that will be going through a design process. A new cohort every year is our goal. And so in the end of five years, we will have gotten to the rest of the school. The first group and the second group will be those schools that are really ready and are early adopters. They're so ready to do something different. They're already doing a whole lot of new things and they're going to be part of that new cohort. The second big move that we came to agreement on was the learning model implementation. This is about looking at those, those four, the, those four, the personalization competency based, authentic, inclusive, and equitable. This is about making sure that we understand what that is. So this involves professional development to do training around those areas. And then big, keep going back. It's supposed to be, all right. So then we go to the big move number three and maximize collaboration time. We realize we can't do this in isolation and our teachers, our educators are going to need collaboration time to do this and the important work of designing lessons. But when you're designing lessons about, okay, let's understand what our intended outcomes are. And then you start looking at, and then how can we get, make it more engaging? So we first have to know what we want to teach and then, okay, now let's look at what can we do? What are we going to do for those students who don't get it? What are we do for those students that are getting it? What are we doing for those students that are already so far ahead and we can not lose them as, as well and extend their learning? With that, it takes time. And then of course, big move four is authentic learning experiences. Is making sure, and you see that through our work with is having kids, instead of doing field trips, they're doing field work. They're going out into the lagoon. They're, we've got new this year, our, what grade? Biztown Junior Achievement, our students are going to be going out to Biztown and having, setting up a business and doing those authentic learning experiences. And you see that throughout our after-school programs and those signature programs that we continue to extend throughout the school year. And so continuing to do more of that. And then of course, big move number five, preparing our learners. Students will explore their passions, foster a deep sense of self-awareness. And so how do we continue to prepare, prepare our learners in order to, to become self-aware? That's either through exposing them to a lot of the careers, get back to career technical education, make that a reality for our students. And so those are the five big moves that we're starting with this year and it will continue of what that looks like. And so as we looking at the whole learner outcomes, it's about becoming now, instead of what, focusing on our students, having the student at the, at the middle of our paradigm and having whole learner outcomes. And we get that through the personalized learning, the, the learning profile that we've identified. That's how we reach the whole learner outcomes. How do we do this? By the learning experiences. And those are the learning experiences we're going to be working towards. To design lessons that are personalized. And this starts with, what if we gave choices to students? You know, you can do a project. You're, you're all going to have to do projects. What if you did it on this or that? Perhaps they would choose something that's a little bit more engaging. It goes into, that's a, a very basic example, but that's where it starts. You look and you just do things differently. Instead of everyone designing the same project, we have a little bit of choice. Because then a student is able to identify what they're really passionate about. And, and of course, authentic, we keep talking about the more real you get it to. You know, designing. You see that at some of our schools where they're going out and raising funds for, you know, for students in children's hospital. Saw that at North, at North Broadway. Teacher is developing a lesson and the students got so motivated and they said, okay, what can we do? They're doing character development. They're needing to do something that's, that will help others. They decided to design, raise money and write letters to children who are going to be in the hospital, at children's hospital during Halloween time. And they thought they should do a care, care package, these notes. So now they're learning how to write letters now with an authentic purpose. Just those little tweaks gets kids excited about. And they realize that they can have an impact in what they're doing. And so those are the shifts that we're talking about in our learning. And of course, competency base, which is really how we're, we're reaching our students is understanding what we need to teach that. And how are we doing that? Big example is through the wheel. The collaboration time that the wheel provides. Our students are getting wonderful experiences with our, our wonderful wheel teachers through art, music, STEM, robotics. They're doing all these wonderful activities and then the teachers are able to, are, are able to collaborate. Mrs. Gardner and I happened to come into a North, North Broadway side visitation. We caught the first grade team. And the first grade team were so excited that we walked in and we're like, so what are you working on? And they shared, they had just finished a great discussion about, one teacher had given, they all gave this assessment. One teacher got 73 percent. The other three teachers got like something in the 40s. And the first question they asked, what are you doing? And they were so excited, they realized that she was using these little books and those little books. And they said, and we're all going to do that next week. That conversation could only happen after school or in between the hallway, but they sat together and they, they asked each other, what are we doing? So again, true collaboration. Two heads are better than one. Imagine all the four teachers working together to figure out what's going to work. And, and they were so excited to share with us. And then of course, they went on and said, look what we're doing. And we have time now to talk about the students who are getting it and what we can do. And last year, we were working on writing. We've already started to do that. So it just keeps building. And they realized that, that, that value they have in spending that time together is time well worth spent. And they're starting to see the results with their students. And that's what a teacher wants, right? You work so hard to design a lesson, to present the lesson and you want your students to get it and then if they, and not, and the goal is you get as many as possible. And then those that didn't, okay, now what do I do? And then you keep at it and you keep at it. It's the art of, of teaching. And so that's what we're looking on. So I'm now going to bring, bring on Dr. Philia up to take us through the rest of the presentation and talk about those other, what else we're doing to kind of get this in place in our district.
All right. So really what we're talking about is making some significant shifts in our instructional model and how we're engaging students. And we're trying to make those shifts so that it impacts the entire organization. And what we know is that in order to do that, we need to have the conditions in place for those things to, to happen. And so with that, we know our principals are key in that work. And so we want to ensure that our principals are supported through that process, but we are bringing them along, providing them with training and also really providing them along with their leadership groups, their site leadership groups, opportunities, different entry points where they can begin to look at this work and see how to implement it at their sites, depending on where they're at as a school site. And so what we've been doing then, like I said, is bringing together our principals at our principal meetings. This is a, one of the topics that we cover is really having them understand what we're trying to accomplish, understand the framework, understand the learner outcomes with the profile, the learning model, and really having them consider and reflect kind of their current state of what's happening at their campus and how they might start seeing some changes. Which grade levels might be ready to take some of these things on? Which teacher leaders even, that might be part of those conversations as they start to explore how to begin that shift on their campus with their instruction. And so part of that work is really focusing in on these three parts for our principals. Really to understand that in order to have those conditions, those conditions are going to consist of ensuring that there's coherence, that we're attending to the culture and that there's connectedness. And so we know that for, in order for that coherence to be effective, that we're seeing that in place, we want to ensure that people understand the framework. That there's conversations at the different levels, not just here, but with our principals, with school leadership teams, with grade levels, so that everyone's really understanding what we're working towards. Also really just understanding those learner outcomes as well as really making decisions around resource allocation. And sometimes that's also allocating time in the conversation so that when the teams do get together or when there are staff meetings, that they're looking at that and reflecting upon what changes they might be able to make. As far as culture, again, this belief in our people has to do with this collective efficacy. We want to encourage our teachers to understand that they have the power to impact the trajectory of their students through their instruction. And so by working together, by having the time to do so, the hope is that that will be impacting our kiddos. And then of course, making sure that we are providing appropriate information, resources, and PD to our teachers as well. And then that connectedness is just again, that ability for people to have the, that we're valuing the collaboration, that we're allocating the time, that we want to ensure that it's not just someone presenting information to them, but that people have a chance to rely on each other and share information with each other on how to make these shifts come to life. So as we look at the framework and the different entry points of what we're trying to do, we have our Leadership Academy. And again, this is focused in on our principals, on our district leaders, ensuring that everyone's understanding the framework, the profile, the learning model, and our priorities with our big moves. Additionally, there's the, another team, another entry point. And that's really focused in on lesson design. And so those teams come together. That includes our content area coaches that come together with teams, school teams. We have Lincoln, North Broadway, Mission, and Pioneer who have volunteered to take part in that. Where they have certain teacher teams that want to really take a look at that lesson design. So then when they're coming together to collaborate during that collaboration time and they're designing their lessons and they're looking at data, they have that lens around how can we insert an authentic learning experience into this particular lesson that we're trying to, to do? How are we, how can you infuse the authentic learning experiences? How can you make sure that the lessons are personalized, that they're competency based, right? That we're really taking a look at all of that to ensure that what we're doing is really engaging and meaningful for students. So that's also a group that has already started that work. They've had a meeting and come together to begin talking about that. And it's great to hear the feedback because they're making connections to be able to see that it is all interconnected. So when they're coming together to collaborate, the framework isn't something that sits over here and that's separate and apart. They're making the connections of really what we want to do is redefine, reimagine, make our learning very engaging for students. How does that fit into your collaboration time when you're working together? So additionally, another entry point is the innovation teams. That team actually came together, started today in fact. And that again is site-based leadership teams. And those are teams, thank you. So those are teams that have been coming together, sorry. They started today. And those groups are really taking a look at innovative practices. So they are going ahead, the teams that have volunteered for that, that wanted that entry point, we've got Rose, Central, Bernardo, Hidden Valley, and Bear Valley, and Del Dios. And so they have sent leadership teams along with their principals coming together, taking a look at what practices they might want to look at school-wide that they might want to be trying out. And then of course, we have our redesign cohort. And for that, we have four schools that are engaged in that process. Dr. Ibarra referenced this. Our goal is to have all of our schools go through this process. We're starting out with four this school year. And so that work has begun. We have our four schools with Limitless, North Broadway. We have Mission and LR Green, sorry. And so the work has begun where they had school site visits, where they're kind of going through that mini design process. And so within their schools, they're again assessing where are they at and what's their current state? Where they're looking at doing kind of visits within the classrooms, taking a look at what practices they have in place and areas that they might begin to look at changing. Limitless, albeit one of our more innovative models, is also though wanting to kind of take a look at how can they continue to meet the needs of their students and even look for opportunities to make their work that much more engaging, offering more opportunities for those kids to come onto campus. And so they've gone through the process. They, along with all the redesigned schools, that they are talking to parents. They've invited parents in to get their feedback. They're talking to students as well, along with their teachers. We had LR Green also doing that. So these are just some pictures that capture that experience. They're looking both at the inside the classrooms and just their general learning spaces that they have on campus. It's a picture of their library there. At North Broadway, you can see, again, taking a look at their instructional practices, at their current state. And then that bottom picture is a picture of their parents that came on the campus to provide feedback. So all of that information, just like the larger design team went through, they're gathering all of that input. They're trying to look for common themes to be able to kind of give direction on their next steps. Mission Middle School also, here's some pictures capturing their work around instructional practices as well, as well as their campus culture. And so in regards to the big moves, we just wanted to give a couple of examples of what, what that might actually look like. We talked about the school redesign with our four schools that are underway right now. As far as the second big move with learning model implementation, again, those are things that we would want to look at around perhaps project-based learning focused on the process, looking at lesson design. That's kind of looking together at the goals of content and knowledge, but also of skills that refer to the outcomes in the profile. Fieldwork opportunities, service projects, and just again, trying to have authentic experiences around their presentations. Like when we had Conway come here and present to the board on their project. Those are authentic learning experiences. As far as maximizing educator collaboration time, that big move, we're fortunate to have the elementary wheel in place. That, we're getting a lot of great feedback about having that opportunity. As far as number four with authentic learning experiences, again, we've got those real-world learning experiences that we want to continue to look at, both on and off-campus, community partnerships and more field work. And then the big move five that references preparing learners, that really has to do around tapping into a student's interests and passion and then trying to teach them or show them what might that look like for them in the future? What career and college pathways might be something that they might want to explore more? And so along with that, internships would be another idea of what that might be. And so along with that, internships would be another idea of what that might look like. So those were just some specific examples around the big moves, and I know that you'll be going to pivot now and talk about next steps with Dr. Ibarra.
Okay, as Dr. Filiad now mentioned, everyone's engaged around the framework. You saw different entry points, you saw the principals are gathering, and you saw schools at different levels, you know, some that are so highly engaged, they're looking at the innovation piece, and so they're engaged through that one. They're engaged at some level. The whole organization is in this state of awareness. You notice our family communications, we've been highlighting examples of empowered learner was last month, this was a month of empathetic collaborators, and of course, next month we'll be highlighting and going through every month what examples of this look like for our staff and for our families and students, because we have shining examples all around us. And so that's the awareness of how everyone is engaging this, in this. So now we're going to go into something, some more exciting stuff. Is, you recall, about a year ago, we got this surprise call by Mackenzie Scott, who gifted the district with $16 million, and said, "Continue to do great things. How can we utilize to support that?" And I remember at the time, he said, "Okay, instead of starting with what can we spend the money on, let's look at where are we headed? And once we know, hey, here's our North Star, this is what we want for our kids. Now the question is, how might we utilize those funds to support the big five moves or the framework? How can we utilize this?" And looking at the school redesign. And you know, we had a lengthy discussion, the board gave us direction to, for these next five years, let's invest the money, and we'll be able to have an ongoing funding source for the next five years, and what could we utilize with those funds that we get every year? And so the question will be tonight is, how might we spend those? So could we utilize those funds and support each school that goes through their redesign? Is that something we will, might want to do? The board that, you know, you have four schools this year, might we give them a budget for the, as part of their school redesign? They could utilize that to, to help them with, it's either in programming, it could be in equipment, you know, if they're going to have culinary arts or things like that, there's going to be an expense there that they need to look. So could it be seed money that they could utilize after they go through their redesign? Here's a nice little, and then after every school, every school will have gotten a piece of that in the next five years. Something else the board might consider is, might you want to support the learning model implementation such as, you know, more project-based learning activities, professional development, a lot more service projects? The wheel, right now we have a plan for the wheel, but we realize the wheel is sitting on one-time dollars. Is this, might we utilize this as a funding source for that? Authentic learning experiences. This is where the board would say, might say, we want to make sure that every middle school, for example, will have a lab of some sort to create a learning space, to create these learning experiences. And in the next five years, we go through and we utilize this as a budget to have something, and that's kind of more global, the board deciding that, hey, we're going to invest in these spaces, and we want X, Y, and Z at every one of our middle school campuses. You know, like a newscast studio for the students, the equipment, a green studio, and those things. Or you think of something else. And so this is really just the start of that conversation. So I'm now going to bring up Andy, who will talk to us about, put it in perspective, talk about the money, and what could dollars be utilized, and how far will that go?
So something I forgot earlier today, ribbon cutting, do you want to say those words? And I say that purposefully because we were all visiting a school that we recently finished construction on, and we take it so far and create what I would call a blank canvas, and then that's filled, the colors, everything are put on the walls, and those classrooms are then filled with all of the learning that our teachers and support staff do. And so I wanted to kind of walk through some of the different, just to give some perspective on different ways we can use this money to create those canvases perhaps. So first, just kind of catch you up, right now at this point, we've earned just under $300,000 in interest where the money sat in treasury. And then enacting the investment that we decided this last board meeting, thank you. The amount of money invested actually will be slightly less than the full 16 million, it would mature at 16 million in the, after five years, but there's going to be about $200,000 that will be left over when they make that initial investment. Then our annual revenue from that as it stands today is expected to be $665,000 a year. So I put this into kind of a multi-year projection of sorts. And so you are familiar when we talk about the budget, the beginning balance, the revenues, the expenses, the ending balance. So with all of the money that we have so far are going to have, or and the amount that's not totally invested, the 200,000, we would start off this year with just about $500,000 as a beginning balance, and then over the course of the next 12 months, of course, just putting these evenly into years, 665,000, so after the first year, first 12 months, we would have 1.1 million dollars. Now I left the expenses as a question mark because that's what we're talking about here, and we'll continue to talk about until we make some decisions on what those expenses would be, what investments we're going to make with that money. But you can see the run-up over the total of those, the five years of that investment overall would net us 3.8 million dollars in total. So I wanted to break down, just to give again some perspectives on what different breakdowns of that money could be. If we invested it, on the right side there, you can see there's a couple of different columns, so if we were going to distribute the money to every school on an annual basis based on their enrollment, that first column there, that's how much each school would receive on an annual basis from the interest earnings alone, the 665,000. Equal amounts, it's about $27,000 per school every year. Then perhaps we would have schools, and we've been, I know we went and visited some schools, some of you went on these tours we did to visit several schools in San Diego County, and we were at one school where there was a grant kind of a program, and students actually in this case would propose a project, and then they would be awarded a grant to then carry that project out. We could go through a process like that with our schools, it's just an idea. Also of the first four schools, as Dr. Ibarra mentioned in the last slide, if we were going to invest the annual interest earnings into the four schools now going through the redesign process, and proportional by their enrollment, this is how much each of the schools would receive from the first year's $665,000 interest revenue. Are there any questions so far on all the numbers on the screen? Okay. Okay, now really for perspective, as we talk about those canvases we can create, and some of the physical things that we might be able to do. Yes, sir.
Mr. McGuire, could we go back to the previous slide, please? Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
So when this decision is made on whether to do it equal share or enrollment, I guess the question that I'm going to have eventually, maybe not for right now, is if this is to design projects and to sort of build the infrastructure, it just, would it make sense that that needs to be done at each site, and it's going to be just as difficult at each site regardless of enrollment? And so maybe I'm answering my own question here, so, but maybe you see where I'm going, so.
And these are just for perspective on the different ways you could break it down. It's not to say that that's the right answer, or that's what the board ultimately would give direction to do, but just to give that perspective, and certainly it's already jumping out at you of what, but that could mean if one of these were the choices that we made. Ma'am?
Well, you also list the first four schools in redesign proportional share of interest revenue in the first year, and that would never happen again because the next year there would be more schools.
There would be an additional cohort of schools, yes.
And so they wouldn't, they wouldn't get such a substantial share because it would have to be eight ways. So I think that that might be, it might be an incentive to rush the process, because the sooner you get on board, the more money you get, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the plan is good.
Right.
Or that the, that everyone's on board as they should be. There's a lot to discuss here as far as how, how the money should be, whether it should be grants. We have the Escondido Education Foundation that already provides grants to teachers for certain projects. It would be kind of a replication of that then.
And I think by what I meant there, would like an entire school would do a proposal with specific purposes to use funding for, and then that perhaps we'd have a committee, board included, that would grant based on what they found was the best proposals that year, for instance.
And how about the school site council? I think that would be a...
I mean, part of that committee for sure, I would imagine, well, part of the proposing team, right? The school sites council, the site administration, other staff, teachers at the school being part of proposing to some committee what we would like to do this year with this amount of money to accomplish something. Again, this is just one more way it could be done to promote a conversation and thought about what to do with this so that we get down to, I feel, once we go through all of these discussions and take our time with it, that we're going to get to something that really will be meaningful. So I just wanted to give a lot of different ideas to create that conversation. None of these things here am I recommending above anything else, just I'm putting them out there for discussion.
To think about, yeah, and you also, the first chart you presented shows the accumulated funds, which we're not, if it's dispersed every year, you won't see that accumulation, so we have to decide.
Right.
Do you want to let it accumulate for larger projects for, and a school might have a wish for a larger project.
Right.
And something that they were willing to set aside the money every year for, what they call that, delayed gratification.
Sure, certainly. And I wanted to put that up there just to kind of show the flow of, the cash flow essentially of it, and the total spending power that that interest, that investment will provide us over those five years, but certainly, once you fill those question marks in with numbers, then that ending balance starts...
The money's going to be dwindling away, yeah.
Absolutely. But remember, that's just the interest revenue. The 16 million would still be available to us at the end of that five years too, so that's just another, we could have put a fifth, a sixth year up there with the full 16 million as the revenue for that year, if we didn't reinvest it, for instance, and that's a decision to be made years down the road.
Well, I'm hearing now, I don't know if you're aware, but the 10-year treasury is, has been bouncing off 5% return. So we're only talking five years, may it be worthwhile to look at a longer investment period too, at that rate. I don't know how long that these interest rates are going to last, is what I'm saying.
Well, at this point, the board gave, took action to invest for the five years.
For five years, yeah.
And that also gives an opportunity to reassess where we're at at the end of that five years, and not be as speculative, and that market is all over the place, and yes, of course, we don't know where it's going to go.
I know, and by that time, it might be 10%. Keep going. That is asking people or not?
Now remember too, when we talked, just to go back to previous work we've done around that investment, if we saw that there was just a huge spike in the market, and it would be so lucrative for us to change our investment, we absolutely could cash that out early. We might pay a penalty, we may not, but if we would only do that, if reinvesting it in a different way would net us even more than what we lost in doing that, right? So, but that would be something we would bring back before the board, and only if it were so beneficial to us to even entertain that thought. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the pictures. Good? Okay. So I just wanted to give some, also some perspective for thought, is to give, just to understand the magnitude of costs for different ideas and different things that could be done. So one thing over here on the first, on the left, Conway, and if you've been there recently or haven't, I encourage you to go visit Conway, and you'll have a couple of kids that'll give you a tour of this area and any classroom you go into, right? They'll introduce you, themselves to you. This is an outdoor classroom of sorts. And what you see there, we have some of the tables, the outdoor kind of tables, you could put umbrellas in on a sunny day, those white things on the, on the wall, on the fence, I'm sorry there, actually are produced by our print shop, those could be used as a whiteboard, an outdoor whiteboard. And so this is an outdoor learning space that they created for very little cost. All of this was done in-house with some existing tables. We could buy other tables for about $2,000 apiece to recreate this at any school we have. So that's just one idea of something that can be done on the outdoor learning side of things. Also, outdoor learning, let's talk about a garden. A lot of our schools have gardens of various sizes and degrees of investment. At Oak Hill, this garden, we put together in-house labor and materials, so our total cost of about $7,500 to build that garden there, and so if that's one of, that's an interest of the board, that's, that's about what the, just to give the magnitude of cost for that idea. Then you've heard a lot about it, this is a rendering of it, the room is relatively close to completion with equipment that's in, furniture being installed, and now we're working on the equipment, but this is the rendering of the final, or what it would look like in its final stages, once it's finished, over at Hidden Valley. And so just for a perspective there, the materials, your computers, all of that, peripherals and stuff, for about $109,000, and then the construction, which was actually done by our own maintenance department for about $35,000 in labor cost and materials that they needed to do to carry out that work. And I put that there too, because in this room, in this case, that roughly $140,000, $150,000 all in is an esports room. It could be the new studio that Dr. Ibarra had talked about, could be a culinary arts classroom. So we would just have to do different types of construction to provide a safe environment for that, venting, things like that for culinary, a new studio, very much the same as this. I imagine that we can do all of what a new studio will require for just about that, or what the esports room costs, or even less. It's computer-based, right? I put over here on the other side in that box, other projects, just skipping to the bottom of that one, looking at what our facilities director has done in a previous district, putting together a woodshop. So for about $600,000, we could outfit a regular-sized classroom, again, having to put in all of the right venting and electrical and all of that, buying the equipment that we could invest in create a woodshop that we don't even have right now, but by using a classroom that we do. Investing more in the outside learning areas, if you wanted to put a shade structure up, about $118,000 for the one we did over at Conway, that's 30 by 40 feet, the dark, the large marquee that we just put out there, which is I think our biggest marquee now, digital marquee at Conway is about $105,000. And I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but that's the cost of the things that if we wanted to do anything like that or incorporate that into our plan there. Now, when we put that marquee in at Conway, we moved it from the front of the school to the high-traffic road on El Norte Parkway. That marquee serves not just to inform the families and the things that are going on at the school, but also to the entire community what's going on in Escondido. Yes, ma'am?
What about the people who live across the street in that marquee?
They get a lot of information all the time.
I don't know. Yeah, 24/7.
This is true.
So, so where did that money come from?
That was done, I believe, with bond, some bond money and other funds brought in for some of it. Some of the work was done even in-house.
I thought we were never going to use bond money for marquees.
Roy, did we use the bond money for that one? That was...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Roy, for seeing me from this one. And then Michelle? And Esser, there you go. That was the right answer, Joan. Thanks for asking.
Mr. McGuire, could I just ask, on some of these items, and I know we're not, we're not speaking of specific projects, but for example, could a woodshop that was going to be utilized in an after-school and vacation setting, could there be a share cost with ELOP money?
If it's part of our after-school program, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, I think that's where we're seeing the most innovation right now, we'll continue to see because of the large investment that states made in the after-school program to provide those nine hours of good care for our students. to provide those nine hours of, of good care for our students and to be enriching as well. And so absolutely, I, I would imagine that could work there. My, just the discussion, okay. So that's all the information I have. Dr. Bar's going to come up to lead a discussion.
Okay, so I think we have now enough information to really now hear from the board about what ideas are, are, you know, let's have a discussion about what is possible, what's feasible. Obviously, we're not going to insist on a plan today. Really, this is to start stimulating their thoughts. If there's costs you want us to get, bring back, or concepts, let's try to get into, you know, what more information we need in order to make a decision. Okay, so I'm going to, we're going to go, return back to the dais and be partaking the discussion.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, for everyone who had a hand in, uh, putting that together. It's, uh, great information. It knows a lot of work and want to acknowledge all, uh, parties that were involved in that. All right. Questions? Ms. Harper?
Or how about just my opinion?
That'll work as well.
First of all, I wanted to give a shout-out to the print shop for these lovely brochures. And I kind of noticed some of the details. I did a tour of it the other day. So I kind of noticed, like, what do they call that, the box edge? And then they trim it, like, that's a lot of detail. So I shout-out to them because it looks very professional. And they did the signs at the ribbon-cutting today. If you notice those signs, they made those as well, so, great job. I wanted to just touch on the, um, framework for the future first before I have my comments on, um, what I, you know, my suggestion for the Mackenzie Scott money. Who leads the school redesign process?
So we partner with LCC, who helps facilitate those meetings. But we are also part of that. So I'm in those meetings where we're brainstorming and then, but at the school-site level, it's between the principal partnering with LCC.
Okay, so if we keep going on this path, we have to keep paying LCC for their facilitation of the...
Not necessarily.
Okay. Oh, I like that answer.
Right, not necessarily. It's really about the conversation right now. We just have a lot of, a lot of different groups going on, different entry points. And what they do offer is when we get, we don't get distracted. The work keeps continuing as we're making sure. Because they're right out on there, the agendas are ready, and they just keep us moving. And that's why right now, we're, we're really appreciative of the support that they're providing us.
They, they implement the, the ideas, basically, so...
Um, and so I, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on the framework for the future. So I really, I mean, it's going to, I think, it's going to be a challenge for me to give it the time and the space that we need to have to work. Because, you know, we always want results right now, but we know this is going to take time. Because we're, a lot of changes we threw at everyone. And so I'm going to be patient to let it develop. I mean, because this is what we want to see, is this working? And we need to give it the time and the space and the resources like we have to make it developed. You know, that's why I want to make sure our, you know, intervention teachers aren't subbing. You know, that's why we want to make sure the wheel is working, is to really give them that time and make sure this program is making the impact we want it to have.
As you said, it's going to take time.
Right.
And it always, I always go back to Conway and the time that that took. And the, the trepidation I had about if this was, if it was really going to work. And then to see what, what's come about. But it's taken a while. You have to have a commitment. Once you start, um, a path, you need to persevere to the point where you see the results. If you give up midway and throw everything away and start over on something new, you'll never accomplish what you're trying to, the goal that you're trying to achieve, so...
And, but I think you're right. Because even with Conway, when we looked at Conway, there was points that we, we loved what we were seeing. And it wasn't necessarily translating into test scores initially. But we're, I, I remember us going and visiting the students and we're like, oh, wow, they're learning how to communicate with each other. And then slowly after a few years, it was like, oh, wow, they're really talking about, I remember there was one, we, I went into a kindergarten classroom and the kid was showing us everything that they had learned. And we're like, wow! And we're like, this kid is extraordinary. No, then they brought up another student and was doing the same thing. So we started to see that there were things that were happening. And I think that's what we're going to start to see, is these key points of, that things are starting to happen at the school.
And that's why we're doing it gradually, implementing it gradually so that we can pay attention to each school.
But also, it's because we have these things, these circles as well, the effective communicator. So like, we're going to start seeing improvements in communication with students. And perhaps we're going to see kids starting to really utilize their critical thinking, i.e. in math, right? We start seeing a lot of these, and maybe some of these are brighter than the others, but we start seeing progress. Because each one of these will have measurements.
Right.
That we can measure.
So that's what disturbed me about the esports room, to see those individual monitors and the individual chairs and thinking, I'd so much rather see kids interacting and collaborating rather than each...
But they are, they are in their headphones.
With their headphones, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's how they're collaborating.
It's a shift of mindset on that, and it takes some time, especially for, you know, the, we're seasoned generations, generation individuals.
Just say what you mean.
Marketing degree right there, put to good use. Because it is, it is, they are communicating, they are talking, they're all, they're doing it in different ways and there is development there. It's just, there's a shift. It's, and it's great to see that we have something like that. Because that's, some so, some students have that skill and ability and sometimes it needs that, that setting to bring that out or to foster it. Uh, and that's what we talk about with each individual, each student is an individual. And how can we provide the platform for them to, to actualize their potential?
And just to add on to that, in that rendering, uh, and that was just an artist's rendering. I think the one thing where we need to recognize the need for is additional chairs. Because I can tell you from experience what's going to happen. You're going to have one kid playing and a whole bunch of other kids sitting behind him, cheering him on, talking to him. And you're not going to have each kid sitting isolated at a, a station. That's not how they work. And, uh, running a game club like that, if they go home, they do sit in isolation. If they're doing it at school, they're doing it as a community, and it's pretty cool.
That's an artist's rendering, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How was that? Oh.
Yeah. I think it is, I assume it.
The actual room looks very close to the rendering that you're seeing.
We need additional chairs in there. Just telling you, we need additional chairs.
There's going to be some soft seating also, and then the ability to broadcast to other spaces in the campus.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It's a very interactive thing.
Isn't that face-to-face? Real life?
The, the, not, not when they're playing, not when they're playing, but when they're sitting around talking to each other, oh, it's very face-to-face.
The, the phrase moderation in all things is still prevalent, Joan, but it does foster communication. But I, your, your point as well, too.
I look forward to visiting. Let's see getting action.
We're going to get her hooked on the gaming. It's going to be great. Look forward to that one. You need to start thinking of your, uh, your call sign.
Cheesecake.
Or we could just go out and look at real, we can go out and look at real sports. The actual live teams.
And so then, um, so my preference, um, for the Mackenzie Scott Foundation money, I mean, number one would be to continue to focus on academic achievement. If there's a shortfall in some of these programs we've established and we find, you know, they're working like the wheel and we lose that one-time money, that would be my priority, is to use that money to keep supporting, to continue that. Now, if we're able to support it without this money, my second choice would be to provide opportunities to inspire our students to, for career and their, in their future path, whether it's CTE or college or a career path. I want to be able, like, give them authentic experiences where they can be exposed to things, whether that's field tri, so whether we spend our money on field trips or, you know, um, a coordinator for that. But I really want to expose them to as many things as possible to show them what their options are.
Like the Palomar visit.
Yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely, just like that.
That was a perfect, a perfect example of, of showing kids what careers are available. And I was thinking of Scripps Aquarium, if we've ever, if we ever bring kids there to use money to get transportation and for the admission. That's quite an experience.
Well, and the Palomar was great because it wasn't just about the medical. They were talking about the electricians they need, the plumbers they need, the network guys they need. I mean, it wa, there was a lot to it. And to, and to show them, hey, you could take these, this set of classes or this career path and, you know, this could be your, a, a very successful future for you, that you do have options. So those would be, that was...
And apprenticeships.
Right, and apprenticeships. I mean, those electricians are at our conference every year going, send us your kid, send us...
And the carpenters.
Yeah, send us your kids. We will give them a great, a great path forward. So again, if, if we're short on our academic achievement funds, I, I'm fine sending it there. But otherwise, I, I want it to really go to inspire our students for the future. Because I think that, I think they saw what spark we have in our community and how we can foster that. And I also think we should get a grant writer, but I'm throwing that in there. We had a parent volunteer at the GATE meeting.
Oh.
But, I mean, I, I think we need someone, you know, either a volunteer or someone to dedicate, get us more money. Because I think we have a lot of opportunities, um, in this district that we can capitalize on to get more funding for our students, but just throwing that out there.
We have had a grant writer in the past.
But a free volunteer pa, parent.
Would, yeah.
I guess that's his job. He said, he said that's his job, so, that'd be great. Now I'm done. Until you say something I disagree with.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I am very excited about all of these ideas that Ms. Gardner and Ms. Harper have come up with. And I'm very, very excited about the fact that we have ongoing ELOP money, which could fund a vast majority of those activities. Birch Aquarium, um, certainly visits to colleges, to, um, trade schools. You know, because what we need to also remember, we have the school day, we have a hundred and eighty very limited, we have a very limited number of school days to do those core academics. We also have a community where, in which many of our students do not have active vacation schedules during the summer or other, uh, school breaks. And so we can do a lot of that enrichment activity using other funding, ELOP specifically, to do a lot of that stuff. So I just think that's fantastic. My preference on the Mackenzie Scott, um, money is transformation. Transformation of our schools, as we've seen at, um, uh, Conway Elementary. All of our schools are doing absolutely fantastic things. I, I am not holding Conway as being an exception within our community. It is the rule. All of our schools are doing innovative things. And all of them, including Conway, can be more innovative if given the resources and, uh, the support and the time. Because we've got to remember, Conway, uh, I think eleven years is the, the length of time that's been thrown out, uh, that it's, it's taken this long and they're still making improvements. So I just agree with Ms. Harper and Ms. Gardner. We need to give schools time. I think we need to really leverage, uh, this sixteen-million-dollar gift. Yes, we need to maximize the return on the interest so that we can extend it out for that, you know, five-to-ten-year period it's going to take for our schools to design, plan, and implement, and then reassess what they've done. Because our community is going to change, right? So what we design today is not necessarily what our community is going to need ten years from now. So we, we need to find a way to have a continuous process of assessing our needs, setting up a plan to get us to where we want to be, re, you know, implementing that plan and then assessing, have we gotten there? And reassessing, what more do we need to do now? So this becomes more of a cycle of continuous improvement. And not a one-time improvement. I has, I have been involved in another school district where they went out with a bond and did a whole bunch of construction for programs that a few years later were discontinued because there was no longer interest. And so we really, with the way the world's changing, we need to make sure that we have an ongoing source or an ongoing commitment to not just redesigning our schools one time, but having a continuous cycle of, of...
Evolving?
An evolving system.
Reimagining?
Of, constantly reimagining, and not every year, because then we get into trouble. We don't want to be doing this every year or every three years or, oh, that was too much work. But no, but, okay, we've been doing this, we've gotten a little better. But now we've got, you know, uh, we, we've got a slightly different community. We've had a different influx of immigration. We've got a different housing pattern, whatever it is. Or something comes out like gaming. Amazingly, we weren't designing esports rooms twenty years ago. And twenty years from now, or ten years from now, there may be something totally new. So I just think we need to not think about a one-time redesign of our schools, but a continuous cycle of design and reassessment and redesign. And make this a constant process where we're looking at our data, looking at our needs, and we're constantly striving for our big thing. And I think that work, I understand the board will be making final decisions, but that work really needs to be done at the school level, by those school-site councils, by the dedicated parents, by the staff, by the administration. You know, and then the plan comes to us. I'm in favor, by the way, of schools submitting their dream. Here is our dream, and here's what it's going to cost. And then leave it up to us to find the money. If it's within reason. But I think if we did not have, for example, um, I'll say EL because that's their name now, but Expeditionary Learning, Conway would not have been able to make this transformation, this huge leap to project-based learning. And not project-based, because that's too broad a term. This is Expeditionary Learning. We wouldn't have been able to do that without the very large investment in associating with Expedit, with EL. And so I think we need to leave that out for other schools and say, if you've got something that's going to be super expensive, but it's research-based and it is results-driven and results-proven, we'll consider it. Tell us what your dream is and why you're doing it. But it, really, it needs to originate and the responsibility for the design. Yeah, I have been a critic of, um, learned-centered collaborative, but boy, I see a lot of value to what they've done. There's not many districts that can lay out their vision this clearly. I don't, I don't know of any, in fact. And so that extra assistance has helped us get to this point where each school has a North Star. And so it may be that each school may need that additional assistance. And I think, I think there's real value there. Yes, we'd all like to be able to do it ourselves, but it's a lot of work and there's other work to be done during the day. So, um, I'm not sure if I've been clear at all, but...
Makes a very good point, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gardner?
Perfectly. No, I, I totally agree. I think that's a, a great point, that the schools themselves, but they... I think that's a great point, that the schools themselves, but they need to have buy-in if they come to us with a program like that.
It has to be theirs.
Ms. Houston?
How, sorry, how much is the buy-in for, like, EL? What does that program cost?
It was about $30,000 for the licensing for it, but they also have an additional staff member to support that work there, too, though. So all in, it's about $130,000.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking if it's like, we have three, yeah, if we have like three, it's $500,000, we have three schools, but that's in the realm of being able to do multiple schools a year.
That's just one example. There's lots of organizations like EL.
So is that ongoing?
Yeah.
$130,000 a year, every year?
Most of that's the staff member that's supporting that work that they do, but yeah, it's ongoing.
Oh, an employee of the, of the district?
The district, yeah.
Okay. Who's been trained in facilitation. Makes sense.
Frank, comments?
No, I'm done.
She agreed with Doug.
I agreed with Doug.
We should adjourn, we should adjourn the meeting then.
Well, I, it's going to be interesting, because I'm going to agree with Zesty, Doug, and you. I really, I, in listening to everything that's been said, it's, I am in agreement in reference to the Mackenzie money, in reference to making sure that we, obviously, we wanted to invest it in a prudent manner. I personally would like to see the development of those extra on ha, in ha, on-hands type...
Extracurricular.
Thank you, extracurricular, thank you. Types of accessibility to the students, because once they become informed of what they can do, that then can spur the continuation of that education program. So if you get in there and you realize, hey, I'm a good, I know how to mix concrete and I enjoy that, what do I have to do to continue doing that, or to be an electrician, or to be working with wood, or be drawing, or something like that? So I think that those programs are extremely important, especially in the middle school era. And it'll just, it can actually just spark you to move forward, going, hey, this is what I want to do. And I think that we have that opportunity with that money to hopefully bring some of those, like the woodworking, or maybe architectural, or electrician. And it, and like Zesty was saying earlier, when you go to the, those conventions, you talk to those unions, and they're begging us to bring them in. They're saying, let us come to your school, let us show you what carpentry is, let us show you what electrician does, what, let me show you what masonry is. We will come to your school, and we will give presentations to your school. So they want to assist and give that education or that spark to the kids. So I think that if we can kind of push that forward, I would like to see that.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing what self-confidence in a child can, can do for their progression. And I think anything we can do to provide them as many, like Ms. Harper mentioned, provide them as many opportunities to find out what they're good at and what can, they can be successful at, is wonderful. So I'm just going to echo what my board colleagues have said. I think you guys have direction. I do like the excitement that it has to be school-based, that, you know, they need to tell us what do they want to do, where do they want to go, and how do they intend to get there, and how do we measure the success there. It's worked at Conway. It can work, as Mr. Paulson has mentioned, we know the work's being done, and our administrators of each of the sites, I believe, know what's best for, for the students there. And I look forward to, to hearing what comes before us for consideration, because I think it's through that process, we'll, we'll see some unique and exciting things that will benefit not just those sites individually, but the district as a whole. So those are my comments, and again, thank you for the presentation.
That was very, that was very insightful, so we'll take this information, but I think I, I think we're, there's a way to get this done. So we'll come back to all of you with kind of what we heard, digested, and then, but it sounds like we're kind of liking the grant approach, see what the schools come up with, and then fund their programs.
Let them tell us what they need.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Dr. Ibarra, for your team's work. I know it wasn't easy. And thank you to my colleagues on the board for a good discussion. Our next meeting will be on October, that's today, will be on November 16th at 7:00 p.m. here at this facility, the Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, at its normal time. And with that, we are adjourned. Hope everyone has a wonderful evening. Good night.